Our City of Forest Park Council Meeting Number 1397. We're going to start by standing and saying the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberty of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, will the clerk please call to roll?
Adams.
Present.
Brown.
Here.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Here.
Oat.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Sylvester.
All right, it looks like all council members are present. Moving on to item number two. Has every council member received minutes? Are there any adjustments or corrections to be made? Hearing none. All right, so I need a motion to amend the agenda.
A motion to amend the agenda and add item B under Presentations of June Business of the Month and award Next Level Fitness and Training.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, and can this be a voice vote?
Roll call.
A roll call. Will the clerk please call a roll on a motion?
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Oat.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
All right, motion passes, and so we are adding an item under Presentations. So this is going to be our June Business of the Month Award, and this is going to go to Next Level Fitness and Training. So one second while I come over there. Any representative from this business? Okay. All right, so on behalf of the City of Forest Park, if you want to be on the camera, if you want to turn a little bit. Now you're fine. So on behalf of the City of Forest Park, so we, Forest Park, the Business of the Month is going to you, Next Level Fitness and Training. So this is in recognition of your company's contribution to the growth and development of the City of Forest Park. We want to thank you for having your business here, and hopefully I can get a gym membership.
Yes.
First of all, I want to say thank you so much. We are greatly, greatly humbled, and we are extremely excited about being in the City of Forest Park. To be extremely transparent with you, this was part of our mission and vision, to be here first, before we were anywhere else. And most definitely, you can get a membership at a discounted rate already. Councilman Holt, Councilman Morse, they're already members, and I encourage everyone to come by. All of our equipment is basically brand new, and absolutely 100% state of the art. And I'll say this, and I'll digress if you will, we still are basically, and I think unanimously, nobody would decline from agreeing with this, we still are in a worldwide pandemic, a health crisis. And one of the things a lot of individuals are not doing is making health-conscious decisions. This is where Next Level Fitness and actually the Dream Center, because we run a nonprofit as well, comes into play, from a nutrition as well as the physicality of exercise. I believe at one point in time, and please correct me if I'm wrong, there was some type of initiative that the City of Forest Park had in place, to where when an individual actually is a resident of Forest Park, somehow, some way, they were able to get a, there was somewhat of a $100 contribution that came back from the city when they get a membership. Our memberships are $99 plus tax for a full year. So when you add in the tax and fees as far as the enrollment, technically, if the City of Forest Park did that, again, for every single member, everybody would be paying the $100, then they would only owe like $4 each month for individual. So there's no one that is doing that in any city, especially with state of the art equipment. But thank you so much for this award, and take that into consideration. Hopefully, that that'll come back up, and let's help Forest Park be one of the most health-conscious cities in the entire state of Ohio. That's what we're here to do. Thank you so much.
If you want to give out your, with this location like that, everything is recorded.
Okay, wonderful. So we're located, of course, in the City of Forest Park, 1183 Smiley Avenue. So please come check us out and allow us to help you.
Next to Dollar Tree.
Next to Dollar Tree. Allow us to help you take your fitness to the next level. And if I did say so, this is the, we are the owners of Next Level Fitness. This is not only my business partner, T. Denise, but this is also my beautiful wife as well. So we are 100% in everything that we do, and thank you so much again. We're humbled and glad to be a part of the City of Forest Park.
What are your hours? I haven't caught anyone there. What are your hours there?
Great question. So right now, we're still in the midst of the pre-sale, because there's so many different things that we're adding to the facility. So right now, we're opening up at 9:00 a.m., and we are closing at 9:00 p.m. As we progressively get closer, of course, those hours are going to change to 5:00 to 6:00 a.m. in the morning. We don't want to, there's some different cosmetic things that we're doing to bring that wow factor even more. So about 85% of our equipment is there that we're bringing, if you will. I believe the council members that are already members, they'll tell you that the equipment is absolutely, it's excellent, it's top-notch, but there's some different things that we're doing as far as painting, and we don't want you to be exercised, say, hey, could you stop a minute so I can paint over you? You don't want to do that. So we've been reducing hours so we can get in there and do some different cosmetic things, but we are excited once again of being in Forest Park, and those hours are going to change. So it's like 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., that's for right now.
We're very excited to have you out here. You have no idea. Very excited, thank you.
Mayor Brown. Mayor Brown, first I want to thank you for coming into our community. We really appreciate your service to our community, and also, we are in conversations to support your initiative of returning reimbursement for activities for our community residents. So we are in the process and talking about it, and it's most likely going to happen. So, thank you.
Sounds great.
So we want you to stay.
See that right there? See how we did that?
Thank you so much for the void that you are filling here in Forest Park as well, not just for, you know, younger adults, but also for adults. I am actually a very good person that, when it comes to buying gym memberships and never going, I'm very good at that. I know, I'm very good at not going to the gym.
See, that's where that accountability comes in.
But I pay.
You already have council member, that's where that accountability comes in.
Right, they could, you know, but there, just one quick question, is there any type of programming that'll happen for the teenagers for the summer, any type of kind of sliding scale, just anything that we should be aware of, or that we could help support, or, you know, make broader for you, for our teens?
Well, absolutely, great question. One thing that is very unique and different about us in regards of our mission and vision, we have the for-profit side, which is Next Level Fitness and Training, but then the nonprofit side is Dream Center. So there's a lot that we do with youth. So for example, we're in, with the Dream Center, with our, with Michael's Journey Autism Program, we're in the Princeton School District, the Hamilton School District, the Lakota School District. We've done things before.
High school district.
So five different school districts, if you will. There's a lot of different things we do from a mentoring standpoint, from the health side, if you will. We teach speed and agility, we teach everything that we actually give to the adults, we actually give to the youth side as well. And I actually personally train a lot of the football players when Woods won the state title. So, yeah, so there's a lot that, so I guess we can take some contribution into that, just a little bit. We didn't get a ring, but they got the ring, but we were happy to be a part of it. And I'll say this, council member, that there, so we have also, I'm leaving out the STEM, so we teach science, technology, engineering, mathematics. There is a plethora of different things that we do for the youth, and we are absolutely open to any conversations, anything we can do to add to be a blessing to the community. This is why we wanted to be here, as you said, fill that void. So any gift or talent that we have that can add to the mix to fulfill the mission in this city, this is why we wanted to be here.
Excellent, thank you. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is going to be communications from the public. So this is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council, or ask questions of concern to them. So when recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped, recorded for ease of transcription, but comments are limited to five minutes. So if anyone wants to speak, they're more than welcome to go up to the podium and say any comments or concerns that they have whatsoever.
Good evening, how are you all doing? My name is Xavier Pierre, I live in 1170 Ironstone.
Yes, it should be a sign-in sheet, no.
Oh, sorry, I'll be sure to do that. Name is Xavier Pierre, live at 1170 Ironstone Drive. Just coming here today because I've been in the neighborhood about six months now, but doing my business and my work, I'm a traveling chef, and we do a lot of corporate catering, so I haven't had exactly enough time always to come down and see what this is about, but I'm definitely glad I'm here to be able to check it out and see what's going on in my neighborhood that I now live in, so I'm glad to be here with you all today. Thank you.
Welcome. You're welcome. You're welcome. You have a day off.
So all right, I have a question for you, Mr. Pierre. What is your specialty as a traveling chef?
So I'm Haitian and from New Orleans, so we do Cajun, Creole, and Caribbean food. So that's what we are paid to do, and we do it very well.
Xavier, if you wanted to speak on anything else, like especially, I know we've had conversations about, you know, food trucks in particular.
Okay, yeah.
So yeah, you can, you know, state your case.
Oh, okay, so one of the biggest things that we have going on is we just recently have acquired a food truck. It just fit, the build actually just fitted in two weeks ago, so definitely we're excited about that. But one of the biggest things I kind of had a question for was, what areas do you all have that are available for, you know, food vendors such as myself, who are adding on that piece to the business, especially if they're a Forest Park resident, to add another flavor, if you will, to residents of Forest Park? So kind of those are my questions, seeing what opportunities there might be for that. I know you guys have Jazz in the Park and other events that probably you all use food trucks for, but being able to definitely tap into that and be able to let the community taste some even great food on a regular basis is kind of the biggest thing that we're always asking and looking forward to do, so.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, we'll let you know about food trucks in particular, just for everyone's, like, just for edification. So I have spoke with Xavier a few times about food trucks, but according to our zoning code, currently they are prohibited, and, you know, they've been prohibited since the beginning. I'm thinking, since we do use so many food trucks during numerous events, but we have a lot of businesses that are not necessarily in the middle of the residential neighborhoods that we have, but we do have kind of business parks. I don't see it being too much of an issue for us to permit food trucks to come during lunch hours in particular in those business parks, as long as those particular business owners don't have any issue with it whatsoever, but that would require something coming before council in the future of us permitting food trucks. And so that's going to be a discussion that we'll have to do at a later date, but I just wanted people to hear that from a chef who wants to come here and bring his, you know, his culinary skill set to our area. And our businesses, they would love it. We do have a lot of factory workers, we do have a lot of engineers in factories all day, 24/7. I mean, well, not 24/7, but nine to five, and if we do have a, if we have more culinary options for them to frequent, I think that can open up a lot more other restaurants and brick-and-mortar locations aside from just food trucks, but that's just a discussion we'll have at another point. All right, is there any other communications from the public at this time? All right, so hearing none, we're going to close that section, and we're going to move on to reports from, of standing committees, so we're going to start with Council Member Adams.
No, sir, I don't have any reports at this time, thank you.
All right, do you have any items to add to the work session?
Not at this moment, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you, moving on.
I think so, yeah, sure.
I just want to ask, I know you're on the beautification, why did they change the judging to the end of June? Because by the end of June, all flowers are dead or gone, or any blooms or anything that they have.
Yeah.
What was the reasoning behind changing it to the end of June?
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, thank you, Councilwoman Holt, for asking that question. The reason why it was changed is because we did not have enough participants to do the judging, and because we did not have enough participants to do the judging, we wanted to give ourselves opportunity to solicit more volunteers to participate in that particular activity. We just did not have enough people. The committee itself would not be able to handle all of Forest Park. We did not receive any inquiries or commitments rather to judge for the beautification contest.
Okay, thanks, I was just wondering.
However, since you brought it up, thank you. If anyone that is watching, listening, or sitting in the audience would like to participate with the beautification committee's contest, we welcome you, we would absolutely love to have you aboard. Ms. Sally, please forgive me, but I'm going to ask that you contact Ms. Sally Boyd. If you could please call for the City of Forest Park and contact Ms. Sally Boyd, and she will get your name, number, contact information, and then hopefully we'll be able to solicit enough volunteers to be able to do it.
Okay. Anyone else have any other questions for Councilmember Adams?
I think I have a question. Would there be an option where residents would be able to submit their address to say if they wanted to be a part of the beautification?
I'm sorry, Mr. Sylvester, can you please rephrase your question for me, so I can better understand it?
Residents would have an option to submit their address as a resident that they would like to be looked at from the voting perspective?
We did not have that discussion, Councilman Sylvester. However, I can take that back to the committee. I will send an email out to them either tonight or within the week to see if possibly that's an option. Historically and traditionally, though, I believe that it has always been participants, volunteers, and beautification committee members have gone out into the community and just kind of walked around or driven around and found those houses that kind of stood out, that they wanted to acknowledge for a job well done, for being well maintained and manicured. But I will make that suggestion to the committee, and also to if any other council members would like to participate, we could welcome you as well to help us judge.
There was a discussion when I was on there that that was a possibility. To do that, the same as to do the Christmas light judges, because, you know, because of the lack of participation and people that would help them to do that, so you might want to pass that on.
Yes, ma'am, I will mention that to them, but I will also say this respectfully, the beautification committee consists of a lot of consistent members that are mature, and the request is for us to actually want to, for now that I'm on the committee, this is my first year being on it, wanting to know if there are ways, we're soliciting new members to participate as well, for new energy, to be able to go out into the community and be equally as active as they have been active in the past.
All right, so we're going to move on, but before I go to the next committee, if there is at any point, we're getting down into the nitty-gritty, if anyone wants to leave or has to leave, feel free to do so at this moment. I know, because Xavier, I don't know if you got to bounce or nothing, but, you know, because some of us get boring. But, all right, so next is Councilmember Clark.
No, Harris, oh, Clark, all right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a report at this time for the work session, however, I would, sorry, for the work session, however, I would like to submit a resolution condemning the attack on, in Buffalo, New York on May 14th. I think being a community that's predominantly of color, of course, impacted a lot of us, was very disturbing and traumatic in many different ways, and so collectively denouncing and condemning that, you know, those acts as terroristic, and making sure that our government is looking at ways to be supportive, not just to victims, but also bringing attention to methods of preventing radicalization and common sense reforms as a city, I think, could be a good thing, and so I'd like to have that on the work session.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Clark. Moving on to Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to add at this time, nor do I have anything to add for the work session, but I would like to acknowledge the fact on June 14th, the United States Army will turn 247 years, so any Forest Park residents who are past, present, future members of the United States Army, happy birthday.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Harrison. Moving on to first, Vice Mayor Holt.
I do not have a report tonight and nothing to add to the work session, thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to second Vice Mayor, Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Quality of Life Commission met on June 1st, and we are ready to move forward with requests to the Human Resource Committee to start filling seven vacancies. Thank you.
So there's, I have a quick question, so that's going to be seven members of, seven residents, or?
Yes.
And so it's two members of council, seven residents, okay.
Correct.
And do you have any items to add to the work session?
No, I do not.
All right, thank you, Dr. Moore. Moving on, last but not least, Councilmember Sylvester.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a comment on this coming weekend for the City Cycle Family Event that's happening here in Forest Park on June 11th, sponsored through the Park and Rec Commission. I know that we've got a lot of postings around within the building, having seen a lot from the, as I might have been driving to the community, but just to make the acknowledgement that that's happening this Saturday, starting at 9:00.
Yes.
And we go through the morning portion of Saturday to the early afternoon. And in respect to those, this event coming and some future ones, I'd like to see if we can revisit how we may introduce information on the website.
Okay.
Because when I look at the website, it's not there upfront when you actually just go to the website basis itself, so I think that that information should be, even if it's a link saying events, current events that's happening, it should like on there and bring up the posting information that we put out. And also that the information that's identified for about Forest Park, there's some content there that's referenced, some years, we've had a lot of change, so we need to revisit what's about Forest Park on our website to bring it up to date.
Okay. Yeah, I can add that to the work session as a discussion item, because I do think that there is something, a lot of things on the website that we can update, so thank you for that, Councilmember Sylvester. Do you have any other items to add to the work session?
No, no.
All right. You, all right.
I apologize.
I'm sorry.
I apologize, I meant to mention something as well, and I can wait, just for the good of the council, I just wanted to mention.
Yeah, you're going to have to wait.
Yes, sir, that's not a problem at all, sir.
No, I'm joking. Please, because I did wonder if you was going to mention that, so go ahead.
Yes, sir, I apologize. So also, everyone, on June 15, Wednesday, June 15, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m., Hamilton County, Hamilton Countywide is having a job fair. It is my understanding that the salaries for the jobs that they are hiring for range between 30 to 100 and maybe 20 or 30,000 a year. It is all of Hamilton County, Job and Family Services, Hamilton County Clerk of Courts, Hamilton County Sheriff, Hamilton County Department of Disabilities, just every department within Hamilton County will be having this job fair. I will provide additional information for Ms. Sally and our mayor, and hopefully we'll get it on our website as well, but it's going to be at 1916 Central Parkway on June 15th from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. So in light of, you know, COVID and people losing their jobs and wanting, people wanting to get back to work, this may be a great opportunity for people to be able to take their resume and do some onsite job interviewing and whatnot. Thank you.
Can you say that address one more time?
Yes, sir.
1916 Central?
Yes, sir, it is 1916 Central Parkway on Wednesday, June 15th, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Ohio Means Jobs. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
And that concludes our reports from council members, moving on to the mayor's report.
I'm so sorry, I apologize.
Yeah, go ahead.
Like I said, coffee and my work. Environmental awareness, I apologize, we had a wonderful meeting, over 100 volunteers showed up for the neighborhood cleanup. There's some pictures that you can find on the media about that, our kids were involved as well. There was also a butterfly garden that has been begun, and a young lady has placed in the finals, she is ranked now fifth, well, she placed fifth in the state of Ohio for a butterfly garden, which, you know, she's from here, and one of ours, and so we would love to recognize her at council, and so that was one of the requests that was made, and so I guess we could add that as well to the work session.
Okay.
Also, you know, from the pandemic, there were a number of different, there were shut offs that were going to happen, and environmental awareness under Wright-Gwynn has made, has done a very, very good job of making sure to inform households that were on the, that were potentially going to have their water shut off. They used media, they used print, they used a number of different, you know, mediums to make sure that they reached out to our residents, contacting over 1,700 households. And so for, you know, such a small army to do that, that type of work was really amazing. Educationally, they've got an outreach program that we'll be launching, so we are working with the schools to see how we can best support them in a sustainable, a sustainable environmental science-based project outdoors, and so we are, that's in its infancy, but we'll certainly give you some more updates as time goes on. With that, I'm finished, thank you for allowing me the time.
All right, thank you for that, Councilwoman Clark. Can you send that resident information to Sally so we can get that on the work session?
Yes.
All right, for the butterfly garden in particular.
Yes.
All right, all right, so moving on to the mayor's report, actually, the only thing that I have to report is that the city, Forest Park's Second Annual Citywide Cycle is happening this Saturday, like Councilmember Sylvester mentioned, June 11th. So it's, you don't have to ride a bike, some bikes will be provided for free to rent, you can also walk the path, but immediately after the bike event, there will be a family fun day, so there'll be, you know, games and food, so just, it's always a, it's just a good way to get people to come out and experience our parks, a good way for families to make memories in our parks, and then to have a good community event that everyone can enjoy and everyone could participate in. And I'll let the city manager give a little bit more detail about that, but also to Councilwoman Clark's point, we do want to send all of our thoughts to the unfortunate victims in Buffalo and Uvalde, Texas, because we do condemn such heinous actions, and you see, I do have my orange pin on, because we do want to end gun violence, and we want our communities to be safe, so that, that's something that everyone can most certainly agree on. So our thoughts are out to them. But that concludes the mayor's report, and we're going to move on to the city manager's report.
Okay, I have a few things of interest to the community, and again, we'll start off with the city cycle event that's coming up this Saturday. That'll be at 9:00, the registration in Central Park, that's 9:00 a.m. this Saturday. It'll be, at 10:00, the, I'm not going to call it a race, but the event, it's not a race, you can walk it, you can bike it, you can, but that starts at 10, so that'll kick off, and then at 1:00, we're having the Family Field Day, which is basically, bring your kids, bring your family, and spend some time in the park, and there'll be all kinds of things going on for the kids and for the parents as well, so take the opportunity to, you know, spend a few hours in the park with your friends and neighbors, and we should have a really good time, a great time last year. Concerts in the park are beginning in June, it'll be June 11th, excuse me, I think it's 14th, wrong day, 14th, from 7:00 to 9:00, that's on Tuesday, and there'll be one in July and September as well, and we add them as we can. So again, Central Park, 7:00 at night on a Tuesday, 14th, come on out, listen, they're all free, come on out, listen to some nice music, and enjoy yourself in the park for a couple hours from 7:00 to 9:00, again, on a Tuesday afternoon, Tuesday evening. Jazz in the Park's going to be August 6th, we'll have more information on that with the headliner, we've, I think we finalized on, and I think we've got the contract ready to sign, if not signed, and we'll give you more information about that, but set your calendars, it's a great day, August 6th, that's a Saturday. The yard beautification's coming up on the 25th and the 26th, we need volunteers to judge, so, you know, you can, if you, even if you can't get out that much, there's always an if you, even if you can't get out that much, there's always an opportunity to go do a street or two, or just do your own street. And so volunteer on that if you can, and definitely participate, make sure your lawns are looking nice, and let's make Forest Park show proud those, that weekend. One of the things I would, did want to mention that we just received notice from the state of Ohio for a capital improvement grant to Central Park. It was $150,000. We'll be receiving for improvements to, excuse me, Central Park. I want to thank Representative Jessica Miranda, who's obviously one of our residents, and she does a great job for us here in our district. She really went to bat for us, and we want to thank her for all the work she did to make sure we actually increased. Two years ago, we received $100,000, so this is 150. It's increased. We want to thank our state senator Blessing as well. Without their, without them too, you know, we would have, they made sure that Forest Park was represented, and we got our fair share. And I also want to thank, for the region, Representative Seitz, who helped to make sure that southwestern Ohio got its fair share. So we want to thank all of those folks for everything they do for us in Columbus, if not the region, for, for our particular city and our senate district and our House Representative District. So that's, that's good news. We should be receiving that notification shortly, the official notification. Wenton and Kemper, the project out there, that's the, the, the street improvement project has begun. The engineering technically started today. You say you'll see some folks out there. The construction process is still, you know, a few weeks away to begin, but the actual process has begun already. So we'll get more information as we have a firm schedule as to when that's going to begin and when it's expected to end, and how that might affect traffic and businesses in the area. The, the Interior Streets Program that was passed by city council, approved by city council, I think at the last meeting and the meeting before, we're having our meeting with the contractor tomorrow to set up the, get, get the schedule and make sure that, again, to make sure everyone's notified, make sure the public's notified we have traffic problems. If, if there are going to be any, we've got those addressed. So we'll be meeting with the contractor tomorrow. Again, more information to follow as that's finalized. So a lot of construction on streets this, this summer be going, be going on, particularly Wenton and Kemper. And I think, oh, in terms of the jobs, we'll talk about jobs a little bit. We did meet with Kroger, the mayor and I. And we met with the district director locally, and there's a lot of things that we're, that we're going to try and partner with Kroger on. But one of, one of the things in particular, they wanted to make sure that everyone aware is that they are hiring. So if kids need jobs this summer, it's a good place to go and, and get a, get a good start. And that was my first job when I started out, so, so again, if you have, if you have someone, I think they go down as low as, I want to say 14, but don't quote me on that.
Definitely, 14 or 15 with a permit.
Yeah, so, but anyway, they, they specifically want to see kids from Forest Park, in particular, kids from the high school, and get them in there and, and give them an opportunity to work this summer and, and work through school as well. And so if you have somebody, you know, go to their website, walk over to the, to Kroger's and say, hey, I want a job, and I'm sure they can direct you. But we'll have some information on Kroger's specifically as well. But that was a very nice meeting, and it was very productive, I think, and we look forward to partnering them, with them on a few other issues as well. Other than that, I'll quit talking and we can move on. Any questions? I'd be glad to ask the answer.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones, I have a quick question. Could we get the, we have so many wonderful things happening for summer. Could we get like a summer, here's what's going on this month and have it in a kind of a, like, vertical fashion or something? In bullet points versus, okay, that'd be great if we could get that digitally and you send that out to me. That'd be great.
Sure, I can do that.
Also too, I don't want to go against the order of business or the order of things, so please redirect me if need be. But my question is, with us having the jazz concert on June 14th and another on August the 6th, is there opportunity for us to have a food truck and/or food trucks at those events? Because 7:00 to 9:00 is kind of my dinnertime. So if I want to come out to that event, maybe go to the event, have a good time, be able to get something from a food truck or two.
That's part of the-
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Part of the event.
I didn't see that on the flyer. I apologize. Thank you so much, Ms. Holt.
Yeah, just, yeah, come out, get some food, enjoy yourselves, and support our local vendors.
Thank you.
Are they all, are they all identified? All our vendors?
I think so, yes.
Okay. What about for jazz?
I'm pretty sure they're identified as well, but, but we're still in the planning process. We can add to that if we need to. So if there's somebody that wants to be a part of that, we try and make sure that none of the one local folks get first choice, but people who have done it in the past as well, because they've supported us, so we want to continue to support them. And we don't want to have multiples, there are too many multiples of the same, you know, so.
Makes sense.
We try and get, you know, a pretty good mix of the types of foods that are there, but, and we don't have a lot of room either, so. We can't have, you know, 100 of them in there, but-
Yeah, that's true.
But we, we definitely want to add, because food trucks add a lot of flavor to the event, and-
No pun intended.
Yeah, no pun intended. And, and, and they should, and they're part of all of our events, so. Again, if you, you know, locally, we can put out some information on the website that'll talk about how to become a, you know, a vendor at our events.
Right.
You know, a lot of the ones we've used in the past, we, they contact us, we contact them, and, you know, and that's kind of how it's been working. But we, we're not opposed to having extras.
Thank you so much.
The more the merrier.
Thank you so much.
And I'm looking forward to some Cajun food.
All right, thanks for that, Don. And that concludes the city manager's report. Moving on to other reports. We're going to start with our law director, Mr. John Wykoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since the last meeting, I worked with staff and management on that, these TIF issues that you'll be addressing tonight, and also on the permit processing ordinance. In addition, I reviewed a software contract that's being adopted by Parks and Rec. So that would be the end of my report. It took a lot more work than that. I can guarantee you that TIF was a struggle. But if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for our law director? All right, here and now, we're going to move on to our other report from Ms. Sally Boyd, our clerk of council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance numbers 15-2022 through 16-2022 and resolution numbers 12-2022 through 19-2022 were posted as required, and that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Ms. Boyd. All right, so moving on to the next item of business, which is unfinished business and general orders. So I need a motion to suspend the rules. Dr. Moore?
I motion to suspend the rules requiring in reading for, on two separate days and read for a second time by Title Only Ordinance Number 15-2022. This ordinance was read for the first time on May 16th, 2022.
All right, is there a second? It's been moved improperly. Second, is there any discussion? All right, hearing none. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to suspend?
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes. All right, motion passes. Okay, so will the clerk please read ordinance number 15-2022 by Title Only?
Ordinance number 15-2022, declaring improvements to parcels of real property located in the city of Forest Park, Ohio, to be a public purpose under Section 5709.40 of the Ohio Revised Code, exempting such improvements from real property taxation, declaring certain public improvements to be necessary for the further development of those parcels and establishing a tax increment equivalent fund.
All right, thank you, Ms. Boyd. Now, I need a motion to postpone indefinitely ordinance number 15-2020.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would council like me to explain what this is?
Yes, please.
We, we, under our ordinances and charter, we follow Robert's Rules of Order. Robert's Rules of Order are written in Old English. It's, you know, it's not the easiest thing to read. But postponing for an indefinite period, the way it was originally used, if a legislative body had a conflict, there were pros and cons, one side who thought they might lose the vote would postpone indefinitely. What that did, that gave them two bites at the apple. The cons could argue what was going to be put on the table, and if they lost that argument, then it would go up for a vote, and they got to argue again on the vote. However, if the postponed to indefinitely was passed, that ends it. They got their argument in, they made their point, and it never got to a vote. Nowadays, we use postpone indefinitely just to put an ordinance to sleep, so it doesn't get addressed again. So this is like a final vote, basically saying, we don't want to consider this ordinance.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. Because I needed that history lesson. I definitely did. I'll tell you that right now. All right, but I, so I need a motion to postpone indefinitely?
I motion to postpone indefinitely ordinance number 15-2022, which has been replaced by ordinance number 17-2022.
It's been moved improperly. Second, is there any discussion? Well, Mr. Wykoff actually gave that. So will the clerk please call the roshan, uh, the motion, roll on the motion? My goodness, it's, it's kind of late.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. So we are postponing that one indefinitely. All right, moving on to new business. I need another motion to suspend?
A motion to suspend the rules requiring in reading in full, the reading in full on two separate days, read by Title Only Ordinance Number 17-2022 through 2022. These ordinance were posted six days prior to this meeting.
All right, thank you, Dr. Moore. Is there a second? It's been moved improperly. Second, is there any discussion? All right, hearing none. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to suspend?
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Motion passes, 7-0. Will the clerk please read ordinance number 17-2022 by Title Only?
Ordinance number 17-2022, declaring improvements to parcels of real property located in the city of Forest Park, Ohio, to be a public purpose under Section 5709.40 of the Ohio Revised Code, exempting such improvements from real property taxation, declaring certain public improvements to be necessary for the further development of those parcels and establishing a tax increment equivalent fund and declaring an emergency.
All right, is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester? Oh, I'm sorry, Don, did you want to?
Can we take a five-minute recess?
Okay. Do, do I have to do a motion to do a recess?
Voice call motion. Just a voice call motion.
All those in favor of taking a five-minute recess, let it be known by the sound of voting aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we are going to recess really quick. I need a, I need a motion to reconvene.
A motion to reconvene.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion to reconvene passes. So will the clerk please read ordinance number 17-2022 by Title Only? Since this is a first reading, we will not do a vote on this ordinance tonight.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, can I go back and see who moved and seconded on the recess? To have recess, to convene a recess, if you remember. Moore, okay.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, one moment.
Just bear with this audience. We need to be in compliance.
Okay, and I am reading this by Title Only?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance number 17-2022, declaring improvements to parcels of real property located in the city of Forest Park, Ohio, to be, to-
Sorry, go ahead.
To be a public purpose under Section 5709.40 of the Ohio Revised Code, exempting such improvements from real property taxation, declaring certain public improvements to be necessary for the further development of those parcels and establishing a tax increment equivalent fund and declaring an emergency.
All right, thank you, Ms. Boyd. And since this is our first reading of this ordinance, we will not vote on this tonight. So we're just going to move right along. So I need another motion to amend the agenda.
Motion to amend the agenda and add as item B, ordinance number 18-2022 and ordinance repealing ordinance number 16-2022, establishing a TIF for the Promenade 2 and declaring an emergency.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved improperly. Second, is there any discussion? All right, hearing none. Will the clerk please call a role on the motion to amend?
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
All right, motion to amend passes. So then, will the clerk please read in full ordinance number 18-2022?
Ordinance number 18-2022 and ordinance repealing ordinance number 16-2022, establishing a TIF for the Promenade 2 and declaring an emergency. Whereas ordinance 16-2022 was passed May 23rd, 2022, and whereas statutory requirements provide that notice of TIF areas be given to the affected local school district. And whereas the Winterwood School District was given notice, but ordinance 16-2022 was passed prior to the expiration of the mandatory 14 days notice to the district, and whereas to allow for the mandatory 14-day notice to the Winterwood School District, now therefore being ordained by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio. Section 1, ordinance number 16-2022 is repealed in its retired, in its entirety. Section 2, this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the peace, health, safety, and welfare of the city of Forest Park, as it is necessary for the orderly and timely redevelopment of the Promenade 2 property. In accordance with all applicable, applicable laws, this ordinance shall be in full force and take effect upon its passage.
All right, a point of order.
Yes.
This technically would have been the first reading of 18, so do we need a motion to suspend to have both readings of ordinance number 18-2022 in order to vote on it tonight? Or will it just still be a first reading, we'll have to wait till the next council meeting?
No, you can suspend the second reading and vote tonight.
Okay. All right, well, can, is there, is there a motion to suspend?
A motion to suspend the second reading.
Second.
All right, it's been moved improperly. Seconded, John, just for edification, can you do the discussion of why we're suspended?
Yes, we had a first reading on, and a passage on 16 last council meeting. But Mr. Jones previously stated or tried, or explained that under the TIF statutory requirements in Ohio, the school district has to be given 14 days. We acted a little too quickly, and the 14 days hadn't officially expired until this meeting. So when we passed it last meeting, we were short on our 14 days. So we're now going to appeal 18 and essentially start over by passing the new ordinance for, and this is for Promenade 2 and Forest Park Schools, we're going to pass that new ordinance for Promenade 2 for their TIF. And when we do pass it tonight, the school will have had its 14-day notice. Actually, a few more days than that, but-
Well, that, that makes sense, Dan. So there's a motion to suspend currently on the floor. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to suspend?
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
All right, motion to suspend passes. Now, another point of order. So do, will we have to read this in full again since we already read it, or will we be able to read it?
By Title Only.
Okay. Can, will the clerk please read ordinance number 18-2022 by Title Only?
Ordinance number 18-2022 and ordinance repealing ordinance number 16-2022, establishing a TIF for the Promenade 2 and declaring an emergency.
All right, is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
I motion that we adopt ordinance number 18-2022.
There's, it's been moved improperly. Seconded, is there any discussion, Councilmember? There's, it's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion, Councilmember?
Well, they haven't, that's what we've clarified. John, it's been Sally.
Yes, he has been clarifying a bunch of times. Will the clerk please? Will the clerk, clerk please call a roll on, on, um, ordinance number eighteen dash twenty twenty-two?
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes seven to zero. Uh, moving on um, to ordinance number nineteen dash twenty twenty-two. Will the clerk please read this one in full?
Ordinance number nineteen dash twenty twenty-two, declaring improvements to parcels of real property located in the city of Forest Park, Ohio, to be a public purpose under section five seven zero nine point four zero of the Ohio Revised Code, exempting such improvements from real property taxation, declaring certain public improvements to be necessary for the further development of those parcels and establishing a tax increment equivalent fund and declaring an emergency. Whereas section five seven zero nine point four ETSQ of the Ohio Revised Code authorizes municipal corporations to participate in a financing technique commonly known as a tax increment financing. And whereas this council wishes to use the authority granted pursuant to such sections in connection with certain improvements in the city in order to meet the public health, safety, welfare, and convenience needs of the area, including new development and traffic capacity. And whereas notice has been given to the Wintonwood City School District and the Great Oaks Career Campuses on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, of the consideration of this ordinance providing for tax increment, property tax exemption as required by sections five seven zero nine point four zero and five seven zero nine point eight three of the Ohio Revised Code. And whereas this city council has determined to grant real, a real property tax exemption for the parcels comprising, comprising the Promenade II TIF, now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio. Section one, this city council has determined to grant a real property tax exemption for the parcels comprising the Promenade II TIF. Section two, that this council hereby finds and declares that certain public improvements in the city to wit the planning, design, construction, and maintenance of public street improvements, including pavements, walkways, bike paths, traffic control devices, and alterations up to existing streets specifically, including road improvements to Winton Road and Kemper Road. The planning, design, construction, and maintenance of utilities, including but not limited to water, sanitary, sewers, stormwater sewers, detention facilities, gas mains, electric facilities, and communication facilities. The acquisition, construction, or enhancement of recreation facilities, including public parks and community centers, the creation or enhancement of buffer areas and open areas necessary for ensuring the capability, compatibility of adjacent land uses, the acquisition, construction, and/or enhancement of public service facilities and public safety facilities. The acquisition of land in aid of industry and commerce, and the purchase of property rights away in easements or other rights in property necessary for the completion of the public improvements listed above, or a public purpose that, and that those public improvements are necessary for the further development of the parcels of land described in Exhibit A attached to this ordinance. Such, such parcels are hereafter collectively referred to as the City of Forest Park Promenade II TIF, which parcels are located in the incorporated area of the city for the creation of jobs, increasing property values, and the provision of adequate public services in the city of Forest Park. The further development of the parcels in the City of Forest Park Promenade II TIF will place direct additional demand on the public improvements. Section three, that pursuant to section five seven zero nine point four zero B of the Ohio Revised Code, further improvements to the parcels in the Promenade II TIF occurring after the date of this ordinance are hereby declared to be a public purpose and are exempt from real property taxation commencing for each parcel with the first tax year that begins after the, the effective date of this ordinance and in which an improvement resulting from construction of or to a building first appears on the tax duplicate and ending on the earlier of, one, ten years from the commencement of the exemption for each parcel or to the date on which the specific public improvements as described in section one or, section one above. The public improvements that will benefit the Promenade II TIF are paid in full from the tax increment equivalent fund as designed in section five. Hereof, but in no case will any improvement be exempted from taxation for more than ten years for each parcel. It is hereby determined that, one, a portion of the improvements will be exempt from real property taxation. Two, such portion will be seventy-five percent of the assessed, assessed value of the improvements. And three, the public improvements directly benefit, or once made, will directly benefit the Promenade II TIF. Section four, that pursuant to section five seven zero nine point four two of the Ohio Revised Code, the owner or the owners of the improvements will be required to make annual service payments in lieu of taxes, the service payments, to the Hamilton County Treasurer on or before the final dates for payment of real property taxes. This council hereby expresses its intention and authorizes the city manager to sign such documents as may be necessary and appropriate to ensure the payment of such service payments. Section five, that pursuant to section five seven zero nine point four three of the Ohio Revised Code, there is hereby established the City of Forest Park Promenade II Public Improvement Tax Increment Equivalent Fund, the Tax Increment Equivalent Fund, into which the service payments will be deposited. Money in the Tax Increment Equivalent Fund will be used to finance the public improvements and may be used to make compensation payments to the Wintonwood City School District and/or the Great Oaks Career Campuses at the discretion of the city council. Section six, that the proper city officials are hereby authorized to do all things necessary and proper to carry out sections one through five above, including but not limited to filing any required applications for tax exemption with the Hamilton County Auditor and/or the State Tax Commissioner. Section seven, that the clerk is hereby directed to forward a copy of this ordinance to the auditor, to the county auditor of Hamilton County. Section eight, pursuant to section five seven zero nine point four zero of the Ohio Revised Code, the finance director is hereby directed to deliver a copy of this ordinance to the Director of the Ohio Development Services Agency within fifteen days after its passage, on or before March thirty-first of each year, that the exemption set forth herein remains in effect. The finance director or other authorized officer of this city will prepare and submit to the Director of the Ohio Department Services, the Ohio Development Services Agency, the status report required under section five seven zero nine point four zero of the Ohio Revised Code. Section nine, that it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the passage of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council and of any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were taken in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including section one two one point two two of the Ohio Revised Code. Section ten, that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure for the reason that the public peace, health, safety, and welfare of the inhabitants of the city of Forest Park require the immediate creation of the Tax Increment Financing District to provide funds for the orderly financing and refinancing of the improvements to which they relate. And this ordinance will take effect immediately upon passage. Section eleven, that this ordinance will take effect at the earliest possible date permitted by law.
Thank you, thank you, Sally. Man, we can just allow Sally to take a, a quick breather. So thank you. Thank everyone for their patience. All right, um, so I need a motion to suspend the rules requiring a second reading and then read by title only, uh, this ordinance.
A motion to, um, suspend a second reading by title only.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Um, I understand notice was given to Wintonwoods. How, what was their comments about it? Do we know?
Um, we met with the treasurer, not specifically on, in general, they, they were they were okay with it, but they were, they realized that, uh, this is something the city has a right to do and move forward with, so. But they're, they're not required to take any action. Let's just read it. And, uh, they were happy that they didn't have to take any action.
Thank you. Is there any, I think, I know before we used to, um, um, with Paul, we typically had, we looked at some numbers on this. Is there, um, are there, what would they anticipate it perhaps payroll be and?
Well, the, the payroll is the payroll. I mean, the payroll didn't have anything to do with this. This is capturing the property tax values. And, um, we're, we're still in the, we're not sure exactly what the improvements might be. But, um, once we nail those down in terms of what is going to go in there, um, we can, uh, we'll, we'll be able to give a good estimate of exactly how much it's going to throw off in terms of TIF money. It'll be available for the city.
Businesses are going to go in there?
Well, we know exactly what businesses going in there. Um, we're still not sure exactly how much property improvement is going to be. It's not finalized yet.
Can we, um, what are those businesses again?
It's the Tesla business. It's just the Tesla building, or the, uh, the old Fitworks building. And the parking lot outside of the, that, that particular parcel, um, that makes up the, the, the old Fitworks building.
Thank you.
All right, um.
All, all of the funds would go, none of the funds are going to the developer, uh, or to the, to the user. The funds would be used, uh, mainly for any kind of improvements that need to be made to the street in that area. And we're doing a significant amount of improvements to Winton and Kemper right there. Uh, so that would help us to pay for those, but also we're looking to, uh, make a recreational and other improvements for the city, once, um, once, if there's any excess funds that throws, that are available as part of this TIF, which would go toward, uh, future projects within the city, all benefiting the citizens.
All right, there is a motion to suspend the rules, um, requiring the reading on two separate days. Will the clerk please call a roll on the motion to suspend?
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt? Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes seven to zero. Um, as much as we all enjoy Sally reading that motion in full, uh, will you please read ordinance number nineteen dash twenty twenty-two by title only? But just, just before you start that, John, point of order once again, so you can explain, uh, why we're suspending, um, the second reading, just so we can vote on it tonight. If you can just give a, a bit of public final.
Well, uh, our ordinances permit, um, a suspension of the second reading and a reading by title only. So procedurally, that's what you're doing now. But this is the ordinance replacing the one you just repealed.
Right.
Um, and it's being done in a timely fashion in that, I think it was fourteen, seventeen plus whatever today is, uh, some twenty-two, twenty-three days ago, the school was advised, so that now corrects that requirement of fourteen days.
Yeah, just, just, you know, just for the camera and so everybody knows we clear what we're voting on. Just make sure there's no confusion and everything. But, um, uh, Ms. Boyd, we, if you will, please, read by title only.
Ordinance number nineteen dash twenty twenty-two, declaring improvements to parcels of real property located in the city of Forest Park, Ohio, to be a pu- public purpose under section five seven zero nine point four zero of the Ohio Revised Code, exempting such improvements from real property taxation, declaring certain public improvements to be necessary for the further development of those parcels and establishing a tax increment equivalent fund and declaring an emergency.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
I, uh, I move to adopt ordinance number nineteen dash twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion?
We received clarification on the ordinance from our law director of this replacement for, uh, ordinance number sixteen dash twenty twenty-two, so, uh, based on the clarification, I move that we adopt ordinance number nineteen dash twenty twenty-two.
All right, thank you. Will the clerk please call a roll on, on the motion to adopt?
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt? Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes. All right, ordinance number nineteen dash twenty twenty-two passes. All right, will the clerk please read this next ordinance, uh, by title only?
Ordinance number twenty dash twenty twenty-two, and ordinance amending sections one one zero point five five permit, written request requires section one five six point zero six Business Regulations and section one one zero point five six fees of the Forest Park Code of Ordinances.
Okay, um, this is a first reading, so we don't vote on this tonight, correct?
No, correct.
All right. Sorry, I'm just trying to get my notes in order. Actually think I'm missing this next one. Okay. Resolu-, the next resolution. Well, the first resolution right here. Yes, uh, will the clerk please read resolution number twenty twenty-two in full?
Resolution number twenty dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution acknowledging the history of Juneteenth and declaring Juneteenth a holiday in the city of Forest Park. Whereas slavery was deeply embedded, slavery, slavery was a deeply embedded American institution and is the antithesis, and, and, say it again, antithesis to the nation's ideals of freedom. And whereas in eighteen sixty-three, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, declaring all slaves free. However, this freedom was not made known to many enslaved African-Americans until two years after his passage. Juneteenth recognizes that on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, the last enslaved people in Galveston, Texas, were informed that slavery had been abolished. And whereas June nineteenth has since come to be known as Juneteenth, and it's one of the oldest celebrations in America, growing out of the experiences of black Americans and their enslaved ancestors, and it's a celebration of the ending of chattel slavery in, in America, was the first official Juneteenth celebration taking place in Texas in eighteen sixty-six. And whereas celebrations have continued across the United States, including a rich history in the Forest Park community, recognizing the end of slavery and the triumphs, culture, and achievements of African-Americans locally and across the United States and throughout the world. And whereas the city of Forest Park believes that Juneteenth should be recognized as an official holiday in the city of Forest Park, as it was recognized as an official holiday in the state of Texas in nineteen eighty, therefore, it is the, the desire of the mayor and the Forest Park City Council to establish Juneteenth as an official, um, as an officially recognized holiday in the city of Forest Park. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio, and officially declare Juneteenth as a holiday in the city of Forest Park.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd. Uh, so, as everyone just heard, this is a resolution acknowledging the history of Juneteenth, um, in the city of Forest Park, so we're actually going to make this a city holiday, um, so our staff can get time off and then, um, residents can plan Juneteenth celebrations and even council can plan celebrations. But, uh, so the federal government enacted Juneteenth or June nineteenth as a federal, as a national holiday. So this, uh, resolution is just being in accordance with that to make it happen for the city. So I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and properly seconded. Is, uh, there any discussion? Yeah, I know, I'd kind of handle it, but, um, I don't know if anybody else wanted to say anything, because I know Councilwoman Clark has, has pushed for this for quite some time. I don't know if she wanted to say this kind of big moment.
I'm very excited about it.
Any other time, you would just be, you know, going right off the?
This is here.
All right.
We're very excited about it. I think that, um, I, I hope that other communities around us follow suit and, and recognize the importance of this, um, and to our people. And so I think it's going to pave the way for Forest Park to be somewhat of a beacon, um, even in greater Cincinnati, and be able to be really attractive.
Absolutely. All right, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Absolutely, yes.
Brown.
Yes. All right, so resolution number twenty twenty-two passes seven to zero, so Juneteenth is now officially recognized as a holiday in the City of Forest Park, so. Now back to the fun stuff. Oh, one, um, okay, all right, well, uh, so moving on to ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two, will the clerk please read that in full?
Ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending chapter thirty-four Employee Freinge Benefits of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Forest Park and declaring an emergency. Whereas chapter thirty-four of the Forest Park Code of Ordinance provides for employee fringe benefits, and whereas the mayor and city council are updating chapter thirty-four point zero one A holidays of the codified ordinances and follow the federal government by adding Juneteenth as an official holiday for eligible employees of the City of Forest Park, and whereas the city further clarifies the effect of all holidays for employees covered by collective bargaining agreements, now therefore be ordained by the City Council, City of Forest Park, Hamilton County, State of Ohio. Section one, that chapter thirty-four Employee Fringe Benefits, section thirty-four point zero one A holidays shall be amended and replaced to read as follows. Section thirty-four point zero one holidays, the below holidays cover all non-represented employees and shall be observed as follows. A, eleven paid holidays and two personal leave days are recognized by the city throughout the year. They are, one, New Year's Day, two, Martin Luther King Day, three, Memorial Day, the last Monday in May, four, Juneteenth, June nineteenth, five, Independence Day, July fourth, six, Labor Day, seven, Columbus Day, second Monday in October, eight, Thanksgiving Day, nine, the day following Thanksgiving, ten, Christmas Eve, eleven, Christmas Day, twelve, personal leave day, thirteen, personal leave day. Holidays listed above may vary for employees covered under collective bargaining agreements, as all their holidays must be negotiated and approved by city council unless otherwise provided in this agreement. Section two, chapter thirty-four point zero one D, thirty-four point zero one C, thirty-four point zero one D, thirty-four point zero one E, and thirty-four point zero one F shall remain unchanged with the passage of this ordinance. Section three, this council finds and determines that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the adoption of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and all, and of any committees that resulted in those formal actions were meetings open to the public in compliance with the law. Section four, this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the health, safety, welfare of the employees of the City of Forest Park, and shall take effect immediately. This is due to it being time sensitive in nature. Juneteenth is less than two weeks away and must be in effect by June nineteenth to correctly reflect on the books for all eligible employees.
All right, thank you for that Sally. Uh, point of order, can I just make the motion to suspend just to speed it up? All right, so, uh, I make a motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading on two separate days and read by title only ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two. Uh, so it's moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion? Um, because we kind of just read it in full somewhere everyone knows what it's about. What, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Harrison.
Yes.
Oat.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
All right, motion to suspend passes.
Will the clerk please read ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty-two, uh, by title only?
Ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending chapter thirty-four Employee Fringe Benefits of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Forest Park and declaring an emergency.
All right, is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
I motion that we adopt ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion, Councilmember?
Reading, and I know Sally smiled on that final part, so.
Will the clerk please call a roll on the motion?
Oat.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Uh, so moving on, so I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read resolution number twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two by title only.
Second.
Is there, it's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion? So that would be me, so this resolution was posted six days prior to the meeting. All right, will the clerk please call a roll on the motion, motion to suspend?
Oat.
Yeah.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
All right, motion to suspend passes. Uh, will the clerk please read resolution number twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two by title only?
Resolution number twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the disposal of surplus confiscated and obsolete property.
All right, is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
I motion that we adopt resolution number twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Other than it speaks on, the police department is disposing some surplus, uh, obsolete items that include, uh, forty, uh, tactical protective pads, some cross match, uh, fingerprint systems, computer towers and cabinets, so based on the fact that they invented these, uh, equipment, software hardware, that, uh, all things are clear and we'll, uh, I move that we adopt on a, uh, resolution, number twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Councilmember. Don, you want?
Uh, I just wanted to click, uh, uh, Councilmember Sylvester just mentioned that, uh, there are, there is a, a piece of, of, uh, computer equipment that will, the hard drives are destroyed and they do not, uh, go with the equipment. We always pull them out, so, um, I, I misspoke earlier when I said there wasn't a hard drive in there. There is a piece of computer equipment in this disposal form, so.
Okay.
Just making sure that everyone knows that we do pull those things out and destroy them, we beat them with a hammer. Make sure that they're properly disposed of.
All right, um, any other discussion? Will the clerk please call a roll on the motion to adopt?
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Oat.
Yes.
All right, resolution number twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two passes seven zero. Uh, moving on, will the clerk please read resolution number twenty-two dash twenty twenty-two in full?
Resolution number twenty-two dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution strongly recommending helmet use as a tool to prevent injuries and fatalities associated with head injuries to bicycle and other wheel device riders of all ages and a comprehensive approach to bicycle safety. Whereas bicycling is an important recreational activity and mode of transportation that provides valuable exercise and supports sustainable transportation to fight climate change and promote health, and whereas head and brain injuries are a major cause of disability and death associated with the operation of a bicycle on public roadways and public, and bicycle paths, and whereas more than one thousand Americans die annually from bicycle-related injuries, and approximately forty percent of those deaths are due to traumatic, traumatic, traumatic brain injuries, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and whereas a significant number of individuals who survive head injuries do not return to a normal life and are often left with profound disability and long-lasting conditions, and whereas from twenty, twenty-ten through twenty-fourteen, the age-adjusted bicycle injury rate, rate in the City of Forest Park was eighty-three point one per one hundred thousand residents, and whereas bicycle helmets prevent head injuries suffered by bicycle riders during a crash or fall, reducing the risk of a head, brain, or severe brain injury by sixty-three to eighty-eight percent, according to a two thousand Cockrain review, and whereas the City of Forest Park is committed to reducing preventable injuries and deaths in children through the promotion of bicycle helmet use, and whereas the City of Forest Park recognizes that a comprehensive approach to bicycle safety must include helmet use as well as safe built environments, access to helmets, and education about use, and ensuring that all riders are able to safely use a bicycle without the barriers imposed by racism, sexism, or other forms of oppression, and whereas since two thousand and six, the Forest Park Fire Department in partnership with the Green Hills Forest Park Kiwanis Club has provided free bicycle helmets to children in the Forest Park, in the City of Forest Park, and whereas helmet use can protect riders of a variety of vehicle types where there is an increased risk of injury, such as bicycle, scooter, skateboards, roller skates, roller blades, and other wheel devices, and whereas the City of Forest Park believes in an approach to helmet use that does not involve law enforcement in order to ensure equitable access to bicycles and bike facilities, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio. Section one, the city strongly recommends universal helmet use for all riders in Forest Park regardless of age. Section two, the city will support efforts that seek to expand availability and, uh, and lower barriers for individuals of all incomes to have access to helmets, including free helmet distributions by the Forest Park Fire Department and other organizations. Section three, the city commits to work with local community partners and other jurisdictions to expand access to low and no-cost helmets, provide education on helmet safety, and support the improvement of community infrastructure to support safety for bicycle and other modes of active transportation. Section four, the city commits to working with local community partners and other jurisdictions to offer bicycle safety classes, camps, and other educational opportunities to increase bicycle safety knowledge within the community. Section five, the city encourages all local partners and organizations to actively promote universal helmet use and to take steps to ensure that helmet regulations are not being applied inequably.
Thank you for that Sally. Uh, is there any, is there a, um, motion, Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number twenty-two dash twenty twenty-two.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion?
No, Mrs. Boyd read it in full, but, you know, summer's here and we encourage you, um, to wear your bicycle helmet. We also, um, need to consider motorists, um, motorcycles and other, I guess they're called trackers or three-wheeled, and so we just urge adoption and, um, to please, please, um, wear your helmets this summer.
And I'll, and I'll also add, so, um, we had a bicycle, um, camp over at one of the local churches, and our Forest Park, uh, Fire Department is absolutely wonderful, as, as you heard Ms. Boyd mention. If you contact them, especially if you're a daycare center or a child center, um, or a community, um, or a church, um, or a faith center, and you ask them to come out and do a bicycle safety technique class, they will come out and help you and they'll do it for free and show all those kids, you know, how to properly, um, fit their, fit themselves for their helmet, the adjustment, um, for the bicycles for, um, safety, because some, you know, when kids that are too little riding large bikes and wearing their footwear properly and things like that, so they're a wealth of, um, of, um, service and resources.
All right, thank you for that. Uh, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Oat.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
All right, resolution number twenty-two dash twenty twenty-two, wow, uh, passes seven zero. All right, uh, I'd like to make a motion to direct the clerk of council to notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that the City of Forest Park does not request a hearing regarding a liquor license request for Kemper Yummy Sushi House LLC doing business as Yummy Crab House at one two one six West Kemper Road, Forest Park, Ohio, four five two four zero.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Uh, this is really like a housekeeping item. We have, the Forest Park Police Department has made no objections to, um, uh, Yummy Crab House getting a liquor license, so this is kind of just us passing that along. Um, so will the clerk please call?
It's a, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
That's right, uh, all those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven to zero. Oh, okay, uh, so I need a motion to postpone?
Motion to postpone, definitely aye. Okay, to June twenty-first due to illness?
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Um, I guess we all needed to discuss that. Um, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to postpone?
Um, Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Oat.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
All right, motion to postpone passes seven to zero. So I guess that would be the last item then. All right, so we actually did a lot today, um, very notably, the historic, um, acceptance of Juneteenth as a city holiday, so that is just, it's just really, really big, but is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? Hearing none, this council meeting is adjourned.